Nobody reached out to me. He, he messaged me and said, just wanted to let you know, I mean, I can't remember how long ago that was. So when you said that he may have changed his mind, that's when I started looking through the list. But I figured he would have contacted me.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the town council regular meeting Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty four. The invocation is gonna be delivered by Pastor Andre Winters of the Corner Church of Monks Corner.
Good evening, let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we pray, uh, just tonight, thank you for this opportunity for us all to be together. Uh, Lord, we first looked up our community, Lord, those still affected and impacted by Hurricane Debbie and those still recovering. Uh, that God you would please be with them. Lord, we pray for our meeting tonight and our leadership, that God you'd give them, uh, one heart, one mind, uh, just a spirit of unity. Lord, as they take care of our community, Lord, we pray that you give them wisdom and that, uh, that Lord, to give them confidence. Lord, as they get to make decisions and work together, Lord, for the betterment of everyone in this room and everyone outside of this room. Jesus, we pray this in your wonderful name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by council member Da- David Dennis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, approval of the minutes for the regular men- meeting minutes of July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, do I have a motion? Second, all in favor? Mayor's report, first off, I really wanna start today by thanking all of our police firefighters, public service, the response that we had for the tornado and then the floods that happened on Thursday night. The, the Thursday night ones, I think, kinda caught everyone by a little bit of surprise. But, um, if anybody watches anything on social media, our fire department was out there getting people out of houses. Logan and his team was out there in the elements. Um, our police department was out there keeping, you know, everything safe. And everyone else that worked behind the scenes, thank you so much. I mean, we have such a great response from our community. You know, there are some people that are hurting right now, but we really pulled together and did an outstanding job. And I just wanna thank you from, from myself and I'm sure every member of council. So, another busy month, Thursday, July twenty fifth, um, I went to, um, Berkeley High School with the, um, c- band camp there and supplied pizzas and I've seen the councilman, um, Law had done the same thing. That's a worthy thing to, to feed the, the students of our community. Um, Saturday, the twenty seventh, I partnered with Tiffany Gathers for the first annual bookbag giveaway. I'm gonna partner with her again next year. We did fifty fully loaded bookbags, we're gonna try to get a hundred next year. Uh, Wednesday, July thirty fourth, the police department held a luncheon for the sponsors of the summer police camp. Our camp for the police camp is free and the, and the organizations and businesses and, and private citizens that donate to it allow us to have it for free, so thank you very much. Saturday, August third, we held the One Berkeley event at the recreation complex. They gave out about thirty-five-hundred bookbags, it was a great event. I met with Dr. Dixon, um, at the event. Tuesday, August thirteenth, Fox Bank held a back-to-school bash. The police department and fire departments grilled five-hundred-and-fifty hot dogs, gave out chips and, and water, so that was a great event. Then on August fourteenth, we had a ribbon cutting for McCall Thomas Engineering. Councilman Lloyd Dennis and Law was in attendance. Wednesday, August fourteenth, there was a school supply giveaway at Saint Francis Villa Apartments hosted by the Monks Corner Police Department. Um, thank y'all for getting the supplies donated and to show up in the community to hand them out. Um, also, on August fourteenth, the Berkeley High School stag football team held a joint practice at our recreation football field at the complex. Um, had some food trucks, it was a, a good event, I'd like to see that happen every year if we can pull it off. Um, August fifteenth, I was invited to greet the students at Berkeley High School, was out there bright and early. Um, one thing I found out, the girls seemed to like school a lot better than the boys, they was a lot happier being there. Thursday, Aug- August fifteenth, attended a ribbon cutting for Full of It Restaurant and Lounge, that's right there on fifty-two in the Old Browns BBQ building. And also on the fifteenth, the Berkeley Chamber of Commerce asked me to be a guest speaker for Leadership Berkeley, where I talked a little bit about the town of Monks Corner. Saturday, the seventeenth, we had our car show at Direct Complex. Um, we was able to raise over four thousand dollars for the Kennedy Center. Um, our police department sponsored that. PFC Hobart, Hobart was kinda the force behind putting this together. We had a lot of cars, a lot of fun, and next year we will do it even bigger and better. Future events, this Saturday, the police department, we're doing a Habitat for Humanity House over on Hutchinson Lane. Then on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, overdose awareness day. Light the Way for Hope Luminary will be held at the Unity Park on Main Street at seven P M., P M. Join us as we honor those lost to substances and the family and friends who love them. If you'd be interested in featuring a name of a loved one lost to substances on a luminary bag, visit online at wake, wakeupcarolina.org. Friday, August thirtieth, join us for Summer Night Market at Unity Park. There'll be live music, food and vendors and shopping downtown. And finally, Saturday, the twenty-first, the Town of Monks Corner, together with M U S C Children's Health and South Carolina Department of Public Health, will hold a Berkeley Child Safety Fair from ten A M. to one P M. at the Market Pavilion. And that's, does my mayor's report. Now for the administrator's report, Jeffrey Lord.
Sorry, I had to turn the microphone on for a moment. I just, first off, wanna echo what the mayor just said about the amazing staff, um, dedicated, uh, people that work for this community and their response to the storm and the follow-on storm. Um, you know, it's, it's always heartwarming to see everybody pulling together and getting things done and, and, uh, those, those men and women, they do that for the community every day. But in situations like that, you really see it from the center, so I just wanna echo that, that sentiment. Um, I do wanna talk a little bit about the response to the flooding that we had. We have a, uh, stormwater engineer firm that we work with and engaged to do modeling of our system. Uh, we met with them last week, um, and discussed with them about what we learned, uh, from, from Debbie and the follow-on storms. Um, what areas were backing up, when they were backing up. Uh, this is critical data for them to be able to look at the models and help us figure out how to make it better for the future. Uh, so it was a really good conversation, um, about, you know, something that you can only guess in a computer, but because we saw it, we can tell them where things, what happened where and when. Uh, so we were really looking forward to getting from them a proposal to, you know, do another look at the branch. Of course, we did an engineering study at the branch back in two thousand nineteen, I believe. Um, we've been, of course, we did the FEMA property purchases, we're giving the ridge replacements on Winter, Whitesville and Jolly from that study. Uh, so now that we've got this additional information, uh, and, uh, do another study and figure out where we can move next, uh, down the line to help, try to make sure this doesn't happen again. So, uh, good conversations, just wanna let you know about it. And that concludes my report, I don't have any questions if you have any.
New business. Consideration of bids, all-inclusive playground for the Town of Monks Corner, Jeff?
So, uh, uh, we took bids on, um, excuse me, on August thirteenth, uh, for the new inclusive playground. Uh, this includes the playground, playground equipment, sidewalks, fences, uh, it includes landscaping, it includes more parking, so the parking would be extended from the existing parking, the main parking at the recreation complex. So this would sit, um, more directly in front of the complex, uh, as you're looking at it from Main Street. Same as the drawings that y'all have seen before. Um, and so it includes that, there are all, also alternative bids, uh, so if you wanna also do more parking over there by the pavilions, uh, there's an additional alternative for, um, adding a shade structure over, one of, one of the items is a, um, like a, a hanging slide, and so this would add a, a larger shade structure over that as well. There's lots of shade structures in there, but this is one piece that wasn't in the base, uh, so this would be an added feature. Um, and then, you know, and there's a possible deduct for if we did the landscaping, um, we could save some money, but just us trying to do that in houses probably be not as much as it's worth to pay for it. Um, and then there's an additional for, uh, if we're gonna add this new parking lot and have it new and striped, to have, um, re-striping done of the old parking lot, so it kinda looks like it matches, right? Don't have new lines and old lines, so just kinda, that's what the, the fourth alternate is. So, took bids, um, we received, uh, five bids. Unfortunately, one of them wasn't incomplete bid, they failed to include the actual playground equipment in their bid, so they had to be disqualified. Um, but the low bid is from Trident Construction for three million, four hundred thousand, four, four hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, oh, one more thing, remember, we have a one million dollar grant from the state to offset some of this cost. Uh, the rest would come out of next year's budget. Um, so the, the base bid was three million, four hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. This pays for the parking lot, the pavilion with bathrooms and the playground, okay? Alternate one is the shade structure. Alternate two is the additional parking, about a hundred spaces over by the pavilion on the other side of the ball complex. Alternate three, again, is if we save money by doing the landscaping ourselves. And alternate four is re-striping the parking lot. So the recommendation would be to approve the low bid, um, and include alternates one and two. But alternate three, feel like it's still better for them to do it than us do it. And alternate four, I feel like maybe we can save some money by doing that separately, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so what we're really asking then Jeff, just for clarity, is alternate one and two? Correct? And then alternate four as well, or not?
You can do alternate four, I'm just saying you may wanna leave that off, because if you look at how that, their pricing for alternate four-
Right.
Compared to the others-
Right.
Feel like we might be able to get that cheaper just by doing it separately.
Okay. So, then alternate number one, number two, those totals, are they in addition to the grand total?
Yes, so if you did the grand total and you did alternate one and two, the total amount would be three million, eight hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents.
Can you explain one more time, just, just run through that with me one more time and tell me what we're getting in that money?
The new parking lot that goes with the playground.
Mm-hmm.
The pavilion, which includes bathrooms, the playground itself, the fencing, the sidewalks, the landscaping, all that, that's the base bid. Alter one is an additional shade structure in the playground. And alternate two is an additional parking lot over by the Market Pavilion. So it'd be like Farmer's Market and those kinds of events and overflow parking for all of our recreation.
And Mr. Lord, is it true we have currently three million dollars budgeted for this? But of that three million, one dollars, or one million dollars is grant money?
There's, there's three million in the, there are three million in the proposed budget that y'all have seen.
Yeah.
Um, one million of that is coming from the state budget.
And two million out of our-
And so if you were to do that, then you'd be taking, um, two million, two-point-eight million out, out of fund balance. Which is why you have the fund balance.
Right. Um, from my, from my perspective, one of the big things I get hit on from the citizens for the park we have now is not enough shade, and when you go to slide down a slide, it will burn your legs, especially on a small child. Um, you know, one thing that, that I kinda rallied around was providing things for the citizens of Monks Corner. Um, I, I'm, I'm for proposal A and B, so that's kinda where I'm sitting. I think if we're gonna do it, we do it right. I mean, this is gonna be all-inclusive for, for kids with handicap to be able to play and, and I think that we, we should do it, so.
So the request to council would be, if you're, if you wanna do that, you know, identify which ones you wanna do in, in the motion. Um, and as always, we request that you authorize us to do any change orders not to exceed ten percent.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe, um, I believe this is a project that we've been working on for a long time and, and, um, we wanna see all these kids definitely playing, um, and able to enjoy themselves. And so this is a big project that we've been doing. I, I agree with the mayor, let's do it right if we're gonna do it, um, and, uh, and make some of these kids happy. So, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we go with, uh, the grand total with alternate one and alternate two to include shade, Market Pavilion, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Lord, could you state that last portion about the change?
Uh, and author, au- authorize staff to approve change orders up to ten percent.
And including that motion, authorize staff to make change orders up to ten percent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. All right, first reading by title only. An ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight and the budget attached thereof and adjust certain revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. First reading by title only. An ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the Town of Monks Corner, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, do I have a motion?
To approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. O business, there's no O business to be brought before council. Public input will be limited to three minutes per individual. If you signed up for public input, I will call your name, please come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. This time is to give citizens a chance to give the town officials feedback. If you would like any follow-up and have checked the box on the sign-up sheet, someone from the appropriate department will be in touch. This meeting is for council and myself to do the business of the Town of Monks Corner, so discussion on what you address might be limited, thank you. Our first speaker will be John Delude.
Mayor, members of council, I don't speak as fast as Mr. Westbrook, so I'll do my, my very best. I don't like using notes, but I'm gonna try to honor your three-minute limit, so let me start immediately. I wanna thank, take this opportunity to thank the Town of Monks Corner, particularly Logan and his crew, Doug, Chris and, uh, Corbin, for their post-flooding support and assistance in the California branch, uh, and California Avenue, California and Comedia Drive neighborhood where I live. By the way, I live at two oh four California Avenue, been there forty years, and if you ask my wife, she's been there ever since, so. Just so you know, they did everything they could, uh, that could be expected more, um, help, but they were overwhelmed, obviously, by the flooding that we saw on eighth and ninth. They also worked tirelessly through tropical storm Debbie and the terrible tornado that hit our community. For them, thank you, Logan, appreciate it very much. I saw how hard they worked with limited equipment. Um, if I, uh, I suggest that you all consider in the future budget considerations a back truck. Um, and to maintain the substantial amount of storm piping that now exists in our community. Just in our neighborhood alone, the town recently installed between two hundred and three hundred feet of twelve-inch pipe, which is appreciated, I promise you. However, the town really has no way to properly maintain that piping and if it becomes clogged or blocked. Um, it's just a suggestion, back truck might be in your future. I also wanna thank the members of council that came to our neighborhood, um, the morning of the ninth, as, as well as many other neighborhoods throughout Monks Corner, to witness firsthand the flooding that occurred. Thank you for that as well. Um, as most of you know, I've recently expressed concern over the, uh, current state of California branch, which is the main drainage for all of what I refer to Old Monks Corner, but also New Monks Corner. Um, there's, there isn't much you can do when you receive ten inches of rain in six hours, really. Um, and, and that, um, that's a devastating storm, especially following, uh, more than six to eight inches that we had already received, the system was completely, well, but there are some, some things that we can, uh, that can be done to make the associated flooding of such a storm less impactful, to make things what I refer to as better. How much different would the effects have been if we could've dropped the flood two feet? How, how much would the effect have been if we just dropped it a foot? How about six inches? The difference would have meant the difference between the number of homes becoming flooded or not. You know, I've shared with most of you, I've spoken with most of you, there's estimated that more than forty percent of the homes in South Carolina are not properly identified within the hundred-year FEMA flood. I tend to agree with that estimate. The solution starts with a plan, not another study, a plan. A plan to, the properly addressing, improving the channel where it's almost non-existent. From my mother-in-law's house to the back of, uh, to down to Swiggin' Swine is almost non-existent. And that's the two miles of that branch that before it enters the Cooper River. I'm keenly concerned with the new development along that branch. And tonight, I'm anticipating, I was anticipating, obviously, discussing concerns over a, a development that's, um, from an out-of-state developer. I understand that developer decided to postpone and is con- uh, considering the comments of the planning commission. Uh, I suspect that was not the true motive at all, but I understand he's planning on bringing it before council next month, even though it was recommended for denial by the planning commission. I say September is fine, or October or November, whenever he decides he wants to solicit your approval for a high-density tract home development inside Old Monks Corner, we'll be here. Mr. Mayor, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I wanna just say, um, been in your, I've been in the shoes of the council, it's a very satisfying job, it's a very thankless job, so on behalf of our community, thank you very much.
Thank you. And you was my first-ever speaker, and I appreciate you introducing yourself and giving your address, I should've asked for that. And, and I do wanna meet with you and Logan, I just, with the storm and everything, it got off track, so I'll get back with you.
Look forward to it.
Alright, thank you. Alright, our next speaker is, is it? Please come up and state your name and address for us, please. You squiggled a little bit on your, just go over to the podium here.
Lucy, L U C I E Watson, I lived in, I live on one oh eight Shamrock Court, Monks Corner. And we're part of the, uh, yeah, he knows exactly what I'm talking about, because we get the same settlement and the settlement's been building up by that much and everybody on Calif- on Dream, California, in that area. The settlement built up so much, so that's why when all the rain came, it, the first time in thirty years, it went into my backyard. The neighbors across the creek, they used to have chain link scents and grass, it's gone. It washed all away, well, the settlement is the one that's been causing all the problem. And we've been trying to get somebody to help us, has nothing to do with, and I love you to death. But, yeah, something needs to be done and people drawing their trash in, it, it's ridiculous. You know, when all that water went away, fifteen freaking bags with trash washed up. And if it gets stuck on something, then it backs up and everybody has flooding. Just common sense, stop throwing trash in, in, in there, I mean, it's amazing. When I showed you the picture, I mean, what kind of force that water had, it was scary. Thirty years, and a lot of people on that, on Warren Street on my side, they lost a lot of Eastman already.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and that, that, you know, I don't know what can be done, but something needs to be done. Because right now, the only thing that's holding up my Eastman is my posterior lines, and I actually despise this shit. Sorry, but that's about it. Oh, um, that has nothing to do with me. There's somebody on Lail Court and they have the same problem with Eastman, nobody wants to be responsible for it. And they also have a problem with light. When you come from fifty-two De Miramac and you turn, you can't see at night, so I don't know who's responsible for that traffic. If you go at the wrong time on fifty-two, over to up on the old fifty-two bypass, if you hit it, Chick-fil-A. You sit through that traffic light four or five times, because the people wanna go in Chick-fil-A and they block the intersection. So something, I don't know what can be done about that. But everything else, I mean, it's, it's really, it's the flooding, they need to do something with the creek.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what, I mean, he knows how bad it is over the, over the last twenty years. I, I don't know, I mean, but that scared the daylight out of me, because I thought I was gonna lose my heat pump. Uh-uh. So, and I agree with the-
Yes.
So.
You, you checked the box and, and I introduced you to Logan and we, we will definitely get with you. And as for that intersection, that is on our radar, it's a Chick-fil-A, so we're gonna be looking at that.
Hit it at the wrong time.
Yes, ma'am.
And speeding, of course.
We're, we're getting there too, thank you. And our last speaker is Cassie Mann, please come up and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Cassie Mann, three nine three Spruce Ivy. Um, we just moved to the area about a year ago and, um, I could tell when I moved here that it was a good town just by how it felt. I could tell that the members on it, some were following God, and that's wonderful. And, um, I guess the only thing I really have to bring, 'cause I, I really just came here because I felt compelled by the Lord, um, is for the playground, I know you guys have like talked about, you know, different, like what you're gonna use, but the journey I've been on in my health for the past eight-plus years, I've learned certain things are toxic. And if we care about these residents and these children, especially handicapped, um, there are certain things that they're using nowadays, like, um, the tire, you know, stuff that they use on the ground that heats up in the sun, that actually is a risk, health risk for people. And so I care about babies all the way up into seniors that are coming onto this property, so. Um, I know friends that have been parts of other, you know, meetings in Somerville and they didn't think about that or honor it, but I just would ask that you would, you know, look into that for the safety and betterment of the residents and anyone that were, would come there, so, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, and Jeff wrote that down and, and we'll definitely make note of that as we go through this process.
Okay, and can I ask one more thing? Um, I think it's great that you had him pray, um, and if you have, um, I'm working with churches in the region to maybe, like, come together and pray for new businesses or old businesses or anything in the community that might be happening, um, like a storm like this, you know, anywhere, like what you're talking about, the future, um, meetings where people have lost others, even come there and just pray, so, um, maybe, you know, just consider, if you, you feel compelled and you think people would want that, I definitely would love to do that, so. and you think people would want that, I definitely would love to do that, so.
And, and, and that's something, if, if we do a group or if you have a group, please let us know, and I would love to be there, so we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye, y'all.
All right. All right, at this time, we're going to go to executive session for the appointments regarding recent planning commission vacancy and town attorney, contractual negotiations related to an impact fee study, contractual negotiations related to roads, contractual negotiations related to purchases of property for economic development, receipt of legal advice related to the provision of fire service, and receipt of legal advice related to franchise fees. Do I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.
Glad to see everyone still awake out there.
Y'all lost David. Might have went to the restroom real quick. You might have went to the restroom.
Y'all just like us that much?
I know.
Y'all not hearing the announcement, the job could go home.
We're dedicated.
Hey, hey, remember we was here at four o'clock for budgets, I don't know how much pizza's left.
Appreciate that.
All right, do I have a motion to go out of executive session?
Somebody has to take it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're out of executive session. Is there any other matters to come before council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make the motion that we contract with Tysler Bice for a fee of seventy thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of an impact fee study.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Um, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we remove interim for Mr. Jim Brogdon and he becomes our full-time town attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Make a motion that we appoint, uh, Shanda Phillips to our working position on the planning of Zone Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.